Steve.
Scott, thank you.
Sliding down, Frank.
Kind of surprising that Port's not here.
That was shocking.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to call the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District Special Meeting of the Board of Fire Commissioners Wednesday, February 17, 2016, to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to go over just a couple of ground rules for this evening. The first and most important one is no personal attacks if somebody doesn't agree with you. We're not going to tolerate any personal attacks. We're going to allow a four-minute time limit. We beg you not to use it all if you don't need it because we do have a lot of speakers. And I'm going to ask if you have already heard somebody say what you're going to say rather than come up and say the same thing again, I would like you to stand and wave in support or wave an objection and we will keep, we will duly note. And as of right now, looking at the cards, this whole room is an objection. So, we, we, no, we understand that. We totally understand that. We get it. But for the sake of time for everybody involved, every, you know, if we have 20 people come up and talk for four minutes and just say the same thing over and over, it serves no purpose. So, having said that, I would like to turn over this part of the meeting to Chief Joe Daigle.
Before Chief Daigle gets up to speak, I would like to give you some background on who he is. This is his bio. Chief Joseph E. Daigle has been a resident of Florida since 1976. He is a United States Marine Corps War Veteran of Desert Storm. He served in a tank battalion that provided the initial breach through the minefields and charge in through Kuwait. Chief Daigle has served the citizens of Benita Springs as a firefighter since 1993. He began his career as a probationary firefighter and advanced through the ranks from firefighter to lieutenant, acting captain, deputy chief, and assistant chief to his current position as chief. He is currently a state-certified EMT paramedic and has been awarded the designation of certified district manager from Florida State University and Florida Association of Special Districts. He has earned an Associate of Science in Fire Science from Edison College, a Bachelor's of Science in Public Administration from Barry University, and a Master's of Science in Organizational Leadership from Columbia Southern University. He was awarded District Manager of the Year for the State of Florida in 2014. He has functioned in the capacity of fire company officer, division supervisor, incident commander, and various command staff positions during a number of emergency incidences through the course of his 22-year career here in Benita Springs and throughout Lee County. Additionally, he served five years as Secretary Treasurer for the Lee County Fire Chiefs Association. Thank you.
Hoorah.
Before the chief gets started, there's one more thing I would like to add. This meeting is a single-issue meeting on the proposal of the gift of the property on Hickory. Okay? That's the only thing we're allowed to and we're going to speak about, so any other issues can be brought up at another board meeting, but this, this meeting is strictly for the donated property. Thank you.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone. Welcome to the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District Headquarters Station Four. So, we're going to get started, and what I would like to do is provide an overview for you of the district and what we do, and that will help if you have any questions or concerns about the way we respond concerning the properties that we're talking about. It may assist you with your questioning. So, I'll move ahead. Who we are. This is the Florida State Statute Book, and I just wanted to read this because I think this, this is important, and this kind of guides what it is that we do, what the board is responsible for, and what they appointed me to carry out. So, we are an independent special fire control and rescue district, which means an independent special district as defined in Chapters 189-012, created by special law or general law of local applications providing fire suppression and related activities within the jurisdictional boundaries of the district. Now, the term does not include a municipality, a county, a dependent special district as defined by that state statute, or a district providing primarily emergency medical services. Now, rescue response service means an initial response to an emergency or accident situation, included to, but not limited to, a plane crash, a trench or building collapse, a swimming or boating accident, or a motor vehicle accident. Emergency medical services means basic and advanced life support services as defined by the state statute 401-23. So, as we move forward, our deployment model. Here in Benita Springs and throughout the county, we run a two-tiered system, which means that your fire district in Benita Springs has five stations currently. Now, in that five stations, we have six vehicles. We have four engines, one ladder truck, and one rescue vehicle. What, all those vehicles are staffed with at a minimum one paramedic and the rest EMTs on that truck. Most of the time, it's two paramedics on that truck. So, in each zone, meaning specifically in Station Two Zone, which is the beach, we have one engine staffed with four personnel. Most of the time, it's three that are, three on the, at minimum manning. So, now also, in that deployment model, we have two ambulances in Benita Springs, or two and a half. So, this is 72 square miles. We have two and a half ambulances. Now, in Benita Springs, this year, we ran 6,100 calls in the district's area. Now, the EMS system, well, I'll stick with the deployment model initially, but in our deployment model, we obviously respond to any time you call 911, we will be responding, unless it's a situation that only involves police. But any rescue, any medical, or any fire-related, any hazmat, any trench, any high-angle rescue, which we do have, we will be responding. We are the people that come to those types of services. Now, the EMS system, it is a two-tier EMS system. The two-tier EMS system means that you get, we get an initial call from dispatch. You phone 911, you get an initial call. That initial call will dispatch the closest ALS or BLS unit to your emergency. Most of the time, it's a fire truck. We only have two ambulances in Benita Springs, two and a half. If we get one call in Benita Springs, we run 6,100 calls, we're left with one and a half ambulances in the entire 72 square miles we cover. So, most of the time, that is the reason why you get a fire truck that is capable of handling all your medical emergencies. Now, the fire engines are equipped with the exact same equipment that the ambulances are. The difference is, we do not have the potential to put you in the back and take you to the ambulance. Our job is to stabilize you with the advanced life support that we have on the trucks until an ambulance can reach you and take you to the hospital.
One thing I might add, if you could explain the half-truck, and if you could also ALS, BLS?
When I say a half-a-truck, that means a 12-hour truck. So, we have two 24-hours and one 12-hour truck. Two 24-hour sevens and one 12-hour truck. That's what a half means. The difference between ALS and BLS, BLS is basic life support. That's an EMT. Basically, they are capable of doing CPR, initiating oxygen therapy, and assisting a paramedic with any kind of IV or drug administration that would be necessary. They are, or delivering a shock with an advanced defibrillator, or automatic defibrillator. That's the difference. So, with that EMS system, when we stabilize the patient, EMS comes in, and EMS will take you to the hospital, and then that unit is freed up to continue the coverage in your area. So, who determines the resources needed when you call 911? That determination is made by you, the caller. I don't decide. The dispatch doesn't decide. You decide. Now, how do we come to that determination of who's going to go? When you call 911, the dispatcher is on the other end, and they have a process, a program that they go by. By the, the questions that they ask you is determining the level of response you're going to get. Okay? Now, if you say, and anybody who knows anything about emergency medicine, how many people do you get, if with an ambulance, you're going to get one paramedic and one EMT driver. That's what you're going to get. Now, typically, in an ALS call, where you have to start an IV, you have to hook a patient up to a monitor, you have to question the family, you have to pick the patient up, put them on a stretcher, carry them downstairs, maybe across the sand, maybe across gravel, depending on what it is. So, those are, those are all typical things that take place in an emergency situation. And who calls 911? If you call 911, chances are, you're having an emergency. You're not calling 911 because you can help yourself. You're calling 911 because you need help. So, how is that determined? Well, that is determined by a process we call medical priority dispatching. This is what it is. This is a series of questions that the dispatcher asks you before they dispatch a unit to your house. Okay? Or to wherever you're having an emergency. Now, this is, this is scientifically done over millions of calls since, when was it? Since 1979, they've been gathering data in what questions to ask to be able to send you the appropriate resources you need during your time of emergency. So, what will pull up here is when you have a fire engine or an ambulance, typically, it's because, not because you necessarily need a fire truck, it's because you need the people to be able to, to help you. That's why you, one of the reasons why you get a, a fire truck and an ambulance, because in an ALS call, an ambulance is incapable of handling your emergency. I'll say that again. They are incapable of handling an ALS emergency. That's why you have the more people. Lights and sirens. When do we respond lights and sirens? We only respond lights and sirens to emergencies. We do not respond lights and sirens to non-emergencies. When you see a fire truck driving down the road and they don't have lights and sirens on, they could be going to get lunch, or they could be responding to a non-emergency call. What is determined non-emergency? The dispatch center determines what is non-emergency based on what you are telling them on the phone. And many times, in a non-emergency situation, we will only send the fire truck, for example, to a lifting help. You don't need an ambulance, you need lifting help. You have two people on an ambulance, you may have three to four on a fire truck who are more capable of picking you up off the ground safely and putting you where you need to be. So, there are, there are many other lists of types of calls where we do not respond lights and sirens. In fact, in some calls, we do, we do cancel each other, you know, depending on when we get there and we figure out what the call is. Emergency response coverage. I did want to discuss this because when we're talking about emergency response coverage, we can pull up probabilities and we can pull up statistics. Now, for example, I, I put this on there just as an example. When was the last time we had a plane wreck at the airport? Fort Myers International Airport? Or terrorist attack? But statistically and probability, probability speaking-wise, we should not have a crash-fire-rescue team, nor should we have TSA there, because the statistical analysis or the probabilities of us having a plane wreck at Fort Myers International Airport or terrorist attack is not as great as what we would normally determine. So, when we're basing our, our needs in an area, not only do we look at the statistics of how many calls we run or the probabilities of calls, we look at potential danger and coverage. Are you receiving adequate coverage? So, I'll move on to the next slide. This is an example of the people it takes to effectively run a cardiac arrest. Now, number one here, this gentleman is establishing an IV with a bone drill. Number two, here he is, is obviously doing CPR. Number three, is providing intubation into the airway. Number four, is setting up the drugs, pulling, getting an IV ready. This is Lee County EMS here. He's on the, on the radio with the doctor trying to get, trying to get orders of what else he needs to be doing. And number six, is consoling the family, getting the drugs, finding out medical history. And this isn't what we have on every call. This is on a cardiac arrest. Some calls go into cardiac arrest and some don't. That's a determinant. And normally, this is a four-man engine company, we typically have three. So, when I look at this, I say, well, which one of these members would I remove in my family? That would be a question that you'd have to ask yourself. But, that is a typical cardiac arrest. Now, I would tell you, yesterday, we ran 28 calls in Benita Springs. 28 calls. Emergency calls. We had a breathing problem. They showed up, the person collapsed and went into cardiac arrest. This is just yesterday. I'm not going to get into all the rest. Yesterday, we had a possible fainting. It turned into a cardiac event where the person was unconscious in the, in the back of the ambulance. So, these are things that we, we try to be prepared for. And this is all, like I said, statistically done through the medical priority dispatching What I did want to show you is, everything's computerized today. This is what we have as a screen. This shows every single unit in South Lee County. This unit's busy. This unit's, I think they're in transit. This unit's busy, busy, busy. This was taken yesterday. Busy, in station, in station, in station, busy, busy. So, this goes all the way through. Here's, these are the only ambulances you have down here in the entire South County, right here. These are busy, on a call, busy, on a call, in transit, busy, in transit, in transit, responding to calls, busy, busy. That's it. Okay? I think that's a good example. Now, also, when we do, this is, these are all calls from yesterday. So, when we do receive calls, this is what they see on the screen. Okay? These are the questions they ask. This is a CO2 alarm, third-floor penthouse. I believe this was the Colony. Key questions. Is this carbon monoxide alarm? This is a carbon monoxide alarm. Incident involves multiple family residential structure. Neither flames nor smoke are visible. There are people inside. No one is reported as sick. This is a private caller. The caller is on-scene first party. The area zone activated on the third floor is back two bedrooms. The name of the business resident owner is not known. Multi-story structure involved, but two people evacuated. Caller will be waiting outside. So, this is what tells dispatch on how they are going to respond. This is the information they're asking you. So, they're determining who is coming to that emergency. It's just examples of how we do things. This is yesterday also. Vehicle collision, person trapped. How many people do we need on a person trapped in a vehicle? Well, this is the questions that they ask. The incident involved two incidents, it goes on. There is someone pinned in. The caller is on-scene second party. There is no vehicles on, the vehicle is not on fire. And this will tell you the units down here. However, the assistant chief was on this, and I believe he can't, that was the last one. But, working Tac 5 is assigned. So, we have a standard response that is going to be best, most advantageous to give the person who is in that car the chance of survival. You know, and, and I get that sometimes, well, why did you have so many people on scene? Well, typically, we have so many people on a scene because they're needed. We don't send people to calls where we're not needed. And if we are moving that direction, we cancel them. You know, firefighters don't want, believe it or not, firefighters don't want to stand around on a scene where they're not needed. Slip and fall bleeding. It's another same thing, just an example of how alpha response. That's the lowest-level response. It goes alpha, this determines, this will determine the type of response you get. Alpha is the least. Bravo, it's a little elevated. Charlie and Delta say advanced life support. These are all categorized. All of our calls are categorized like this, and this gives us an idea of how, how we are going to respond. Before I get going, I did want to talk about, I didn't talk about this, the COPCN process. In order to provide ambulances anywhere in this county, or Collier County, or anywhere in the state of Florida at this point in time, you have to apply to the county that you're in, meaning our county, Lee County, you have to ask for a certificate of need, which has to go before the county commission in a hearing process, and they will determine whether or not you need that, the ambulance. And if they determine that you do, then you have to apply to the state. At the state level, you get a license to provide ambulance. And then, once that license is provided, then you could buy your ambulances and, and provide the service. Right now, we have to get a COPCN for non-transport services, meaning so all of our fire engines are capable of providing advanced life support for you. Tomorrow, they can say, we don't want you to provide advanced life support anymore Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District, and you're done. You will no longer be getting paramedics on your fire trucks. You will be getting EMTs, which can only provide basic life support. A similar thing is happening in Collier County right now, and that is possible for it to happen here. Now, we believe, as a district, that we should be providing our own ambulance service. So, we have applied, this was five years ago, Chairman? Five years ago, we applied for a COPCN to provide ambulances. We believe we could put three, four, and potentially five ambulances up in Benita Springs for the cost that it's costing the county to do so by the collections fees. We were denied that. Being denied that, we have gone through the legal process to try to have that overturned so we would be, have the ability to provide you more ambulances. We're still in the process of doing that. So, in order for, they have not, the only COPCNs they have granted for transport have been Fort Myers Beach and Lehigh. So, that's the process we're in with ambulances. And many times, still, still, if you have an emergency and you send a two-person ambulance, you're still going to get a fire truck in many instances, because the people, it's the people that you need. It's not necessarily the truck. It's the people that you're going to have to have. And I live in Benita Springs, and I've used the service three times. Let me go back here. Sorry, Greg. So, Hickory Boulevard response. Benita Springs currently responds to emergencies on Benita Beach from Station 22 located on Mango Drive. Everybody here should know where that is. Benita Station 22 houses our water rescue boat and our crew. Now, a significant portion of the response zone of this station is outside of our response time objectives of six minutes or less. Currently, the Benita Springs Fire District deploys water rescue resources by trailering the boat and crew to a specified boat's ramps. Primarily, we go to Carl Johnson Boat Ramp. A fire rescue crew of three can reduce emergency response times by 50 to 80% in this high-traffic, limited-access area. Now, the water rescue deployment can be reduced by 17 to 20 minutes. Currently, Benita Springs is dispatched to approximately one MRT. Now, that's a maritime emergency response, a week. Now, what that means is, we get called for an emergency on the water about once a week. Now, not, they aren't all in Benita Springs. There, some of them are out in Sanibel, some of them are out in, in Fort Myers Beach, some of them are in North Naples, but they say, well, you know, well, that's one a week. Well, that's because if we have an emergency or a lost boat, which we've had, we've pulled people from the water here, they respond their boats to us as well, because one boat doing a search and rescue is not sufficient. And, you know, I, I hear this all the time, what about the Coast Guard? Well, the Coast Guard is not responsible for providing emergency medical services or rescue. Their main job is guarding the coast. They've got big guns. They have no medical capabilities. We've responded out with the Coast Guard many times because somebody's having a heart attack on the water and they can't treat them. So, that's why we will meet them out and treat, treat them instead of the Coast Guard. A lot of these topics are really eight-hour topics, but I'm trying to narrow it down. Emergency response objectives. The Benita Springs Board of Fire Commissioners adopted a performance objective of achieving a six-minute or less response 85% of the time. This time was adjusted from the 90th percentile, meaning 90% of the time, as a result of the street connectivity issues that lengthen travel time for secluded neighborhoods. The performance goals take into consideration a one-minute turnout time. That's the firefighters getting dressed with a five-minute of travel time. So, we currently meet our response time goals of six minutes or less on Hickory Island 14% of the time. That's over two years of data. We've been able to get there in six minutes or less 14% of the time. These are real numbers. All calls on Hickory Island amount to approximately 3.8% of all calls in the district. Medical calls on Hickory Island equate to approximately 2.6% calls of all calls to the district. Now, these numbers equate to approximately one medical call every 2.7 days. All calls occur at a frequency of one call every 1.6 days. So, in reality, if you're going to say, if you were to say to me, "Chief, is it worth putting a station out on Hickory Boulevard?" Judging by the numbers and the money, I may say no. But the fact of the matter is, is that there is a reduced amount of fire and EMS coverage on that beach, regardless of how many calls we run. And that's from a, my opinion from our response model. Determining the need for a fire station has characteristics such as call load, fire load, and response times. The call load on Hickory Island has remained constant for years, approximately 200 per year. Over the last five years, we've responded to approximately 1,009 calls on Hickory Island. Additionally, we respond to approximately 52 water rescue calls per year, approximately one per week. Our response time goals for fire and medical response of six minutes or less are 85% of the time, or are meant 85% of the time, where in fact, it's closer to 90% when we subtract the non-emergency response data. So, statistically, the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District meets our goals. Now, we look at, this is just some, some information that might be of interest. Let's look at the response times by time and alarm date. Okay? This is five years of data. This is from eight o'clock, go up here, eight o'clock at night to eight o'clock in the morning. From eight o'clock at night to eight o'clock in the morning, it's 31.43% of our calls. From eight to eight is 68% of our calls. Days of the week. This is, what day is it? Sunday, 156 calls, 128 on Monday, Tuesday, 137, Wednesday, 123, Thursday, et cetera, et cetera, 162. So, there's, this is over five years. So, there's really no significant difference in the day of the week and when we get the calls. The only significant difference you would find is a little bit over 30% of our calls happen from eight at night to eight in the morning. So, what we're talking about for, in context of this meeting, is this area right here. That's the area that was up for a donation to the fire district. Now, when we look at the response from these areas, from Station Two, which is Mango Drive, to Benita Beach Club, Hickory Boulevard, 4.3 miles and 11 minutes. That's our station here. There you go. Now, from the proposed station at Hickory Boulevard, Benita Now, from the proposed station at Hickory Boulevard, Benita Beach Club, it's five minutes from here to here. This is Fort Myers Beach, Station Twenty-One Leno Road, Station One-twenty-one, at One-twenty-one Leno Road, I saw, I'm sorry. The Benita Beach Club, Hickory Boulevard, six miles, eleven minutes. From Station Two Mango Drive to Lover's Key, seven-point-six miles, fourteen minutes. Now, I, I gotta tell you that these numbers are all taken from, um, from, I think it was MapQuest. And, and they're fairly accurate, they're not always accurate. Actually, our, our times are a little bit longer than that in many cases because we have to, you know, bunker out and get ready and, and drive. So that's why we only meet the six minutes or less fourteen percent of the time. Uh, proposed from Hickory Boulevard to Lover's Key, four-point-seven, eight minutes, four-point-seven miles, eight minutes. Now, we did bring up a, a GIS, when we look at our, when we look at our travel times, we, uh, we have a program that we use that shows, um, the differences if Assistant Chief would put those up. So I think that's the, go ahead, Assistant Chief.
What this is, is we co-, we contracted Lee County. And the travel times that the chief spoke about before were done by MapQuest and it takes basic travel distance and also, it also includes traffic. So any of you ever did MapQuest or, or anything like that, it puts in travel time and it actually calculates some of the, uh, traffic that's on the road. What we did is just as a drive time, this doesn't take in any travel time whatsoever. So we've asked Lee County to come in and do an overlay of how far each station can respond based on travel time and minutes. The overlay you see right here is a three-minute travel time from each station. Each one of these stations is where ours are located. And if we would click on one of them, like here's Station Two, the one on Mango Drive. If you click on this, it gives you the address, and I click one more, it shows you in that three minutes, drive time, all it will cover is about two square miles. And it shows the, um, then again for Station Twenty-Five, it shows all the stations. Now, we can keep clicking on this to show you an overlay, this is three minutes like I said. This is five minutes, and again, this is travel time. We've gotta add in there one minute for us to get bunkered out, get the call, get in the truck, start it, and head that way. As you see here, and we can zoom in as much as we wanted to, and I can take this little bit away. And we can see how far down we go. And again, here is, like I said, five-minute travel time, six minutes from the time that we get the call, from the time we bunker out, they tone us out, we get going that way. And it brings us to about where the proposed, proposed station is. Then we'll go to seven minutes. And that takes us about to, takes us right at the fork from Hickory to Estero Boulevard. Again, this doesn't take in any type of traffic. Since a majority of you, if not all of you are on Hickory Island right now, you know what traffic is this time of year. So this does not take in that, uh, account for the traffic itself. As you can see, this encompasses the whole area, or the whole seventy-two square miles of Benita Springs. And lastly, I'll throw in the nine-minute response time. And I'll take this away. And even at nine minutes, it doesn't take us all the way to the end of our district cause, end of our district goes to right here. And again, if we were to just click on that station, when we're talking square miles, what it will cover on that nine minutes? Let me take this off, one second please. Just for, only for the nine minutes itself. It will show you how far it will cover, and it only covers twenty-one square miles just from that area. And when we talk about this station, we know it's dedicated, we have a zone, but it's still, it's still managed to cover most of Benita Springs also. If we get an alarm or a fire out in this area, we still have to respond it out here. So it's a multi-jurisdictional response as it shows here.
Yeah, I, I did want to point out on this too, that, um, the area of Hickory Island, it's not, it's nothing new that has not been evaluated before. Um, in two thousand and three, actually, it was part of, um, part of the, the plan, the five-year plan, which actually states that the proposed Station Seven on Hickory Boulevard in McLaughlin. Um, another one in two thousand and three, we had seven stations, all the stations we have now, including the one out east we're preparing for. Um, they had Benita Beach, it doesn't say, it doesn't say where on Benita Beach was proposed. In fact, in the two thousand facilities report, two thousand and seven facilities report, it recommended have, to have some sort of facility on, uh, on Hickory Island. And it's just simply because you're not, you're not getting the adequate service out there and, um... Um, an engine, I did want to cover this, an engine versus a rescue, and lots been made of, um, an engine versus a rescue. What does that mean? Well, typically, you know, when we have three firefighters or four firefighters on an engine or on a rescue, depending on what it is, um, the question is, how do you maximize, um, how do you maximize what their capabilities are? You know, one, you can, we do have a light rescue, we actually had three of them at one point in time. But we found it was not cost-effective. Because what we were trying to do was trying to cut down the amount of times that we send an engine out for a rescue, or, medical call. So we bought three of those and we staffed them with, with, uh, two guys. And we found out that now we're paying for staffing and another, and another rescue truck. Was, it was too much, it was cost too much when we could just handle it all in the engine. So, it became a point, it's not a fact of the, that there's the three firefighters going to help, it's an optics thing. It becomes an optics of, we don't like to see the big truck versus the little truck, even though they both carry, uh, three people in them. And, and that's understandable. Um, but the thing that the engine gives you, is an engine gives you a hundred percent of the capability to handle, you know, I always say, "My job is to put a, to put three to four firefighters capable of handling any incident you have, any emergency you have at your house in four to six minutes." And that happens to be the tool that does the job best. Now, is it, um, is it necessary for every single situation? No, but that's just something that we look at when we're evaluating where we're gonna put, um, particular units. And another thing is, um, when we do our rating for fire rating, ISO, NFPA seventeen-ten, these are all standards that we go by. They specifically ask for locations of fire stations. They don't say, "Where's your truck driving around?", they say, "Where is the fire station at? How is, where's the one-point-five mile radius that it can cover?" These are all, affects your, our insurance rates. Um, and then they draw those circles around. How many men are going, what type of equipment do you have on? They check the boxes to make sure you have all the appropriate equipment to be able to qualify for.
Joe, explain ISO.
Yeah. ISO is the, um, company that rates insurance for you. Now, when they come out and they look and they rate your fire department, you, you're based on a scale of one to ten, with ten being the worst and one being the best. Benita Springs is a three. Now, I'm sure when you get insurance, they call you up, "Where's your closest fire station? Where's your nearest hydrant?", and those types of things. And that is what determines, not only commercially, but residentially, uh, what your insurance is gonna be. We get rated on that. So when they come in and they do all that, that analysis, they, that's, that's how they call up and they will find out what your insurance rates are gonna be. Um, we can get more specific about it, Frank, if you want to talk a little bit more about ISO.
Yeah, ISO determines the rate of your insurance, your insurance rates. Uh, um, insurance companies know, you know, they do all their statistics, they know everything. So when they rate your fire department, they also know that a fire department that's rated a three, for instance, will give them, in the, the bottom line, they'll have less losses in that district than a fire department that's rated nine or ten. That's just something they know, it's something that's historical over the years. So when they'll come, they'll, they'll check your fire department, like we said, we're rated a three. Uh, if you have a ten, for instance, uh, they were looking at that on an upper capiva, for instance. Their fire department up there was gonna be rated a ten, that means they're uninsurable. All those people with multi-million dollar homes wouldn't be able to get insurance. Uh, the people on the beach, um, when, if we ever put a fire station on the beach, it would help you is, from your insurance rate perspective. It's just one other benefit. They'll see how far away you are from a fire station. Uh, right now, if you're within a mile and a half of a fire station and somebody feed of a fire hydrant, you're a, you're a three. Further back from that, you rate it up from there. So, it's important from our perspective, that's just another thing. And they're looking for Class A pumppers, anything less than a Class A pumper, we won't get the points for it. They won't give us a credit for it. So, that's why we're deciding, we need a Class A pumper or a rescue truck.
Thank you Frank. Okay, so that's the difference between an engine and a rescue unit. And I just want to tell you right now that, um, our Station One has an engine, and every station has one engine in it or a ladder. Our Station One has a engine and a rescue. Now, why does that station have an engine and a rescue? The reason is the call load is so great that it's more efficient for us to run a rescue on all the medical calls because we get a lot of car wrecks and a lot of fires and a lot of, um, you know, other incidences that require a fire truck. So, that runs double the calls of the other stations. Now, if it got to a point, for example, Station Two, where we were overwhelmed by calls, I would recommend putting a rescue truck there to handle the, uh, the medical emergencies. But if, for the most effective use of the personnel, typically is, if you have no other choice, if you have to put one vehicle in a certain area, you're gonna try to give it the most capacity to handle the most, uh, amounts of calls. You know, because you're, then, then you're, uh, you're not, you're not actually utilizing your personnel to the capabilities that they are intended to. You know, like for example, EMS paramedics, they cannot go into a hot zone. If a car wreck happens and you're trapped in a vehicle, an EMS personnel cannot get inside that car in a, in a hot zone, we call it the hot zone because they're not trained. One of the firefighter paramedics has to get in there, start an IV and do, and do those sorts of things. Um, nothing against EMS, they do a great job, it's just not their job to handle the, the incidences that we do. Let me just move ahead here. That's our Station Two with the roast rescue now, this guy's doing some training. This is a fire on the beach that we had, uh, it's a boat fire we had, just to show you some, I don't know what that is, nothing. That's one of the boat fires. This was a, a window washer incident, that thing collapsed, the guys on, the guys were on the scaffolding and the, the scaffolding collapsed, that's on the beach. Um, I don't know where this, this is a unfortunate incident where a guy was hanging from the bridge and we had to pull him down. So, um, there's another boat fire. And I believe that's it. Commissioner?
Yeah, Chief, be sure and point out to them that another value of the guys and the trucks being there is on the serious calls and you can name them off, they take one of our paramedics with them at the hospital.
Yeah, well, typically, the way it works is regardless of if you had, if you had an ambulance only on the beach, the fire department's still gonna come to a, an advanced life support incident because they'll, they'll dispatch us because they need the people. Um, but when we have an ALS call, heart attack, stroke, you name it, trauma, fall, a, a hip fracture in a patient over fifty-five, in many cases is considered a trauma alert, will fly you out. Um, we have criterias that we go by. Um, we will ride in the ambulance with the paramedics that are on the ambulance because they typically, on, on those ALS calls, they need help. So one of our firefighter paramedics jumps in the back of the ambulance and rides to the hospital. So you have two paramedics in the back treating you when you have an ALS incident. Um, and that happens, that happens quite often, yeah. So that's, that's all I have Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much. Alright, for the people that came in late, I'm going to go over the rules one more time, that there'll be no personal attacks. And I know we've got a lot of cards up here, you get four minutes. Um, we hope that you don't use the whole four minutes if you don't need it. And if you have heard somebody say what you're going to say, um, instead of coming up to speak, please raise your hand and wave in support or wave in objection of the proposal. Uh, thank you. The first card I have this evening is Linda Hamilton. Absolutely, come up to the podium.
Can you hear me? Okay, my name is Linda Hamilton, I live on McLaughlin Boulevard.
Excuse me, it's right close to the microphone.
You can pull that down.
Better?
Yes.
Oh, I can even hear myself, sorry. I live on McLaughlin Boulevard, I'm a resident of Florida and a registered Florida voter. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I would also like to thank all of the Benita Springs firemen, the rescue personnel, and their families for their unselfish and professional dedication to keeping the residents in our community safe. There's several issues on the table this evening. The first one is that RYD International LLC wants to build homes on the ninety-seven acre Mangrove Patch. The Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan has designed, designated this property under the category of Resource Protection. The Comprehensive Plan further references the designation to run in compliance with Benita's, with the Florida statute seven-oh-four-point-oh-six, otherwise known as a conservation easement. It is fairly obvious that this parcel exemplifies a conservation easement. This tract of land has been, and to this point in time, is protected under city, county, state, and federal government jurisdictions. I'm opposed to any building being constructed on or any destruction of the Mangrove Patch. Further at issue, RYD Interas-, International LLC has transparently offered to donate acreage to this fire department with the intent to set a precedent and/or trade a favor for rights to development for this parcel. Further at issue, RYD transparently offered to donate a parcel of this land to Benita Bay for beach access parking. Benita Bay supplies maintenance and security personnel on their existing parcel. RYD has transparently offered to donate a parcel of this land to the city of Benita Springs for beach access parking. Will the city provide personnel for maintenance and security, construction, maintenance, and security of restrooms, continual trash maintenance? And do the taxpayers agree to pay for this ongoing budget expense? The property owners on the beach have paid fair market value for their homes and are taxed accordingly. A parking lot on this tract of land has the potential to add one-hundred to two-hundred day users nestled around Access Number Five. This will significantly diminish the value of their property as well as the quality of life for these property owners. I'm opposed to any additional parking areas. Further at issue, is there a need for the fire station on the island? And this is where I'm gonna go off script a little bit, but, um, from my understanding, a request has been put in for a fully-equipped and manned fire station, a rescue boat, and a dock and a boat lift at the location, all located on the corner of McLaughlin and Hickory Boulevard. To go off script, I, I will certainly concede to your staffing needs. I understand, that's not my expertise, it is yours. Um, but for coverage on this island, I guess I would request of you that perhaps you designate which areas of the island are in need of improved service? Which additional equipment, if any, is necessary? And what specific action, to what magnitude of service is truly needed, given past history? You've commented that historically twenty-two, excuse me, two-hundred calls per year. You should have a real sense of exactly what equipment you needed and what type of facility would properly- and what type of facility would properly respond to that. Okay. So, if justified, I am certainly not opposed to some level of increased services. I am, however, opposed to locating a firehouse, a rescue vehicle or a rescue boat at the corner of McLaughlin and Hickory Boulevard. The placement of the firehouse dead center island among a lovely residential setting is unconscionable. Both ends of the island have commercial zones.
I have to ask you, please. We have a four-minute time limit and we're going to be here all night if this continues.
I know. I'm almost done. Further at issue is the boat, rescue boat. Where we propose to put that, it's in a no-wake zone. It, the boat route is, I'm going to jump through. The boat route to open water is entirely residential. The boat will offer noise pollution to the residents. Recreational boats will be at risk from shoal crashes and avoidance of the rescue boat. If you believe the property owners on this waterway, taxpayers.
I'm now asking you to concede. Okay? We get, you've made your point. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Bill Funk. You can come up to the podium.
That's okay. Very brief. Just the donor in exchange for the land. How many residences would be part of the donor?
Uh, my understanding of that was six.
Six.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Nancy Chek.
I am a resident of McLaughlin Boulevard.
Pull the microphone down. There you go.
I live on McLaughlin Boulevard. Mrs. Hamilton did mention some of the things. I'm also representing the neighbors at 26993 McLaughlin, which is just the first house in on McLaughlin Boulevard. They're definitely affected by this.
Their names? Do you have their name?
Carol Hoop. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here. I have their letter and she did.
Okay. Is that the letter we have? Okay. Thank you.
I won't try to dispute the chief. I have questions on the need, for sure. But I'm not going to get into an argument about the need. I would skip to the chase and say the location is inappropriate. It's right in the middle of a residential area. The high-density areas on Hickory Island are at either end. And it just makes no sense to have a station there, especially when we then allow a developer to go in and get the comprehensive plan changed and all of the permits that would be necessary. And as the Raptor Bay situation, we can see they changed their mind on how, suddenly we might have a 20-story building instead of six residences. I would suggest that it go off-island, up by the water tower, somewhere where there is also water. There is water up there for the rescue boat. It's also more appropriately close to fast-water zones instead of going through shallow residential and right behind that building that the chief is looking at. As soon as the water warms up, we will have families of manatees there. The rest of us drive through there with props up, somebody on the bow because the manatees are thick in there. But I would ask you, if indeed you think there's a need, which I question, please put it elsewhere.
Thank you. Next up, we have Chek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm the husband of the lady who just talked to you. I'm Richard Chek. I'm a retired oral and maxillofacial surgeon. I've had experience with some of the things you've talked about and so we can talk together. I would like to talk about the fire and rescue boat, if that's allowed, behind McLaughlin Boulevard.
Honestly, the fire rescue boat is not part of this proposal on this particular site because there is no access to the water there. But this particular property does not have water access or a dock even part of the proposal.
So, if you were to build on the McLaughlin-donated land, if you accept that.
There would be no boat dock there because it's, we don't have access to the water on that site.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir. There is no access to the water on that site.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll skip to Phase One and a Half then. Okay? I want to also thank you gentlemen for your time. And I appreciate that for what you do. I'll pick up where Nancy left off relative to perhaps the best places. We have surveyed it and I've met with the chief twice last week, gentleman and an asset to you. And we looked at some places where we could accomplish what I feel is really needed for the island and that is to improve its medical services. The, and I'll skip the ones that came in second and third. I will draw to your attention that I gave each one of you a copy of a three-page printout which has color and mine isn't, drawings representing the things that I want you to know. The Big Hickory Island has the water tower on it. The land underneath it is about .8 acres in size with an attached segment that is .62 acres in length. Immediately to the north and adjacent to that property is a waterway. It seems to be a tidewater canal. But as we looked at it together, it may be developable as a rapid-water access point closer to any up-island and offshore places that a fire rescue boat would go. Had to mention that. In dimension, the, for road travel, the distance for a fire truck or an ambulance from the water tower, as I'm going to call it, to Access 10, and that was my measured point, is .6 miles. That's half a mile. The distance from McLaughlin Bay, or Century Link, to Access 10, and I chose that because it's close to the higher-density condominiums, I measured 1.02 miles. You measured 1.5 miles. The travel time would be less from the six-tenths of a mile part because the immediate access would be on Astero Boulevard, which has a much higher speed limit and much less traffic than Hickory Boulevard. So, those are assets. That's all noted in the stuff I gave you. The, and in that material I gave you is a topographical measurement of the land as it lies adjacent to the water tower. I'm going to move to the next phase and hopefully I can get out of here quickly for the next speaker. In my experience of what I did for a living, we had occasions to treat people in very dire situations. And at one point, we had a young fellow brought in, aged 14 months old, with a babysitter and a neighbor who'd aspirated a full-size marshmallow during a seizure. And that was after lunch. My partner and I showed up and met him in the treatment room after our staff had called an ambulance. And this was many years ago. We did what's necessary. We scoped him, pulled out the marshmallow, tubed him. I did a cut-down, started an IV, chest compressions. I had staff doing that. We had four people. And 35 minutes later, the ambulance showed up. We needed system asset management. A few weeks later, a major level on trauma center went to that and it was effective. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Nancy Spreming. Okay?
She's passing and again.
Again.
Against. Passing and against.
Thank you. Crystal Morris.
My name is Crystal Morris. I lived here on McLaughlin Boulevard since 1985. You can allocate my four minutes to Mrs. Hamilton, who I saw to research the subject very thoroughly and I agree with her whole heartache. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Frazin. I hope I've said that correctly. Yes. Thank you very much. Dawn Konstantkowski.
First of all, I'd like to thank the commissioners for setting up this meeting. At the last meeting we were at, Marty Roach and I spoke and you said that you would set up a meeting so that we could discuss the telephone building and the one and a third acres. And you told me if I packed this place with people that didn't want it, that you would listen. And you're listening and I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
And also, when you went up to get those ambulances from Lee County, those five ambulances, you should have asked us to help. We would have been there for you. Let's see. The property owner is not vested for anything on the wetlands property. Although they received RS-1 zoning designation in the 1970s, they never applied for development orders. And in the meantime, the state implemented Comprehensive Planning Act and Lee County and the city adopted comprehensive plans. The property was placed in the Resource Protection category, which would only allow one residential unit per 20 acres. They would have no vested rights. They would have had to vest those rights and have a development order by October 16, 2002. There have been no development orders applied for to date on the wetland lots consisting of Wolbert Mauk in a mangrove swamp. Therefore, there was no vested rights prior to this or subsequent to October 16, 2002. In addition, as of November 16, 1990, these parcels came under the Coastal Barrier Resource System, COBRA, and therefore they can't get federal flood insurance. The two lots are located in the future land-use element, Resource Protection, which is wetlands under private ownership. If this goes any further than tonight's meeting, we will also research all of Benita Bay planned unit development orders to see if the densities of these two lots were transferred to Benita Bay planned unit development, which I believe they probably were. But I haven't had time to do that. The wetlands parcels are also sandwiched between single-family residential to the south and to the north. As far as the telephone company property, they received approval by special exception prior to the 1985 Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act, which finally ensured that the development orders and zoning regulations could not, whoops. Which finally ensured that development orders and zoning regulations must be consistent with the COM Plan. Although the telephone company use of the property is vested, any other use other than single-family residential would not be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan of today and therefore would not be allowed under special exception today. If the phone company was going for approval today, they could not get approval as it would be inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan. If they want to amend the special exception, they have. They will lose the existing vested right as they are only vested for specifically what was found in the Lee County Resolution, ZAB 85149A. In State Statute 163, legal status of the Comprehensive Plan, a development order or land development regulation shall be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan if the land uses, densities or intensities or other aspects of development permitted by such development order or regulation are compatible with and further the objectives, policies, land uses and densities or intensities in the Comprehensive Plan and if it meets all other criteria enumerated. All three parcels, in addition to land use categories mentioned above, also fall under coastal high-hazard area restrictions, restrictions specific to barrier islands and restrictions specific to Little Hickory Island and wetlands. In the COM Plan, there are more than 40 categories, goals, objectives and policies that affect these parcels. Any proposed use must be consistent with those 40 items and the entire text of the plan. And I just have like one more little paragraph. May I finish, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Under the current plan, if the two wetland lots were combined, they could have the maximum four single-family houses only. The owner of the two wetland lots can show no hardship in order to receive any increased density or increased intensity of use. Increased intensity of use would occur from the addition of just one of the two proposed parking lots, not even mentioning the increased intensity of use that a fire station would create. Under the plan, the telephone company building is vested. But if they were to leave it, it would only be allowed single-family residential use based on the plan. Any other use in addition to the vested telephone company would not be permitted. I recommend parking a fire truck and an emergency vehicle with a boat and trailer at the public beach parking lot next to docks or up at the water tower. You would have bathrooms available and food and I'm quite sure that it would be nice for the crew also to spend the day at the beach. I would like to thank you for this meeting and want to thank for your service to our community. You guys are wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Bailey Shalgan.
I'll be very brief. I just have two points. Number one, I'd like to stand and acknowledge Ms. Hamilton, isn't it? I agree and stand with everything she has said and everything else as well. My primary objection also is to the information that was passed around in the tentative agreement with the RYD, with your fine body, the covenants. I stand objective of all of those. And then I have one point I'd like to make with respect, due respect to the chief. Most of these gentlemen in the fire department know me. I know them well. We're very, very appreciative of them. I may be more so than a lot. They have saved my life on two occasions. The chief talked about the amount of time that they were not satisfied with in getting their facilities up Benita Beach Road. I live almost at the very end. I'm very near the beach. I'm at 26343. Two different times in the last four years, I was both immobile and unconscious and very near death. These gentlemen got from Mango to me in time to save my life in both times. I will be eternally grateful as will my wife. I think they can get where they need to be in enough time. The other thing, the last thing, and I wasn't going to comment on this. We own one of the two approved licensed, what have you, boat ramps on Hickory Island. We tried sometime before to try to help the fire department with their use for the rescue vessel. We stand prepared, gentlemen, if we can be of service ongoing. Mi casa su casa. If we can help you, we're here to help you. Other than that, thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shalgan. Jim Hines. I believe, Hines? I think that's a D.
Good evening, y'all. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on this.
You're welcome.
First of all, I want to certainly thank and applaud the highly intelligent and very knowledgeable people we'll have living on Hickory Boulevard. Most of the things that I was against have pretty much been caught up with. One thing I have not heard anybody mention yet is a cost factor. This present of this 1.3 acres of land, it's a swamp. It's been a swamp ever since Florida was made. The cost of clearing this 1.3 acres, the thousands of truckloads of fill that's going to be coming over our bridge, down our road to fill that, the cost of the extended pilings to be able to support this building and pilings for a parking lot because your trucks are very heavy. You can't just put it on dirt and think it's going to hold up. So, the cost of free land sometimes is very, very expensive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Linda Isbell.
My name is Linda Isbell and my concern is I've already got a draft.
Thank you very much. David Plummer. Appreciate that, sir.
Appreciate that, sir. Thank you. Bob Eckles.
Bob Eckles, and I also live on McLaughlin Boulevard, as many, many people here do. Joe, thank you for your presentation and the conversation before this meeting. I enjoyed that. To review a little bit on the numbers that you gave, let's talk about 6,100 calls. Let's talk about Hickory Island and our area. 200 calls average per year is on the screen. Let's further talk about those 200 calls. Of those 200 calls, 80% are medical calls. These are your numbers, by the way. I'm not making this up. And out of the calls that we get, or you get, there are three fire calls, three, out of every 200 calls, five-year background, three. One of those calls is a structural fire, one. Now, it's nice to have the equipment that you have. It's nice to be prepared for everything from a splinter to a nuclear detonation. And we get warm and fuzzy thinking about that. The service is great. The service is costly, and that we live with every year when we pay our taxes. But I'm concerned about why every time we roll a fire truck. There's other ways. The sheriff's department has great mobility and great response, and they don't have a fire station or a police station on every corner. They don't have it. They got one. How do they do it? They do it with mobility and communications and a fast reaction time. And this is what we were asking you to consider. A mobile unit parked maybe on Hickory Island, maybe up towards Lover's Key, somebody who, this has already been mentioned, to respond in a timely basis within the seven-minute rule for survivability. This is what we're thinking. We don't need a multimillion-dollar firehouse and $750,000 trucks to handle this situation. We only ask that you consider alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Saber.
Sorry.
Elaine Sherwin.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak before you, and I appreciate your dedication and service to our community. I have several issues with the agreement. As I'm reading this, it seems that there are very vague generalities built into the agreement which could contradict the purpose. First of all, if the deed to the station is going to be restricted by the developer, it seems that it contradicts the ownership. Secondly, can the fire station enter into a contract with a private developer if it's a government entity? Those were my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Steinmeier.
Hey, chief. Good. You know, I'm... Yeah. Hey, how you doing? Okay. We talked about alternatives. I have here pictures, aerials of the water tower out on Big Hickory Island. We live on Little Hickory Island. You keep saying Hickory Island, but there is no Hickory Island. It's little and big. And this picture here shows the ownership of the water tower. Now, the chief went out and looked at this, and he said there's not much land out there. And there's a 200-foot right-of-way, and this particular piece of property is owned by CDC Land Investments. Okay. Well, you go across the street, there's another, right across the street, there's a piece of property, and right here is the beach club. So the response from the water company to the beach club would be like a mile, or less than a mile, go down and over to get to the beach club. You'd be half, you'd be two miles from McLaughlin. So you could come from Mango, or you could come from this station, and you would get there quickly. This particular piece of property is owned by Berrin Collier Investment Corporation, which happens to be better known to the local people as the Nude Beach. Maybe that's why I haven't been able to get...
We cannot put firemen anywhere near a nude beach.
We don't want the firemen out there, huh?
I don't want a question.
That is the Nude Beach, and since it's private property, the sheriff has a hard time enforcing laws on private property with the nudies. Now, that, so there's another one. Now, you go a little further down the road, just past the water company on Big Hickory Island, across the street from the water tower, there's a piece of property in the blue here. This is owned by, guess what? Lee County, by our own government. We own this property. We, the people, own this property. Why couldn't we put something on it like an emergency medical equipment on this? Your boat ramp is just down the road a little ways. You're halfway to, you're almost to McLaughlin. You've got to go all the way to Lover's Key, which is quite a ways down the road. This would be a perfect setup. Now, Larry Keiker, he owes me, and I can talk to him and get this piece, get this ball rolling. And by the way, I'm running for mayor of Benita Springs. Thank you, Rick. My lodge.
Followed by Greg Peterson will be the next.
My name is Marty Roach, and I'm not running for mayor. That's for sure. I spoke at the last meeting that you all had here, and I was representing the Benita Beach Alliance at the time. I'm here basically for myself, because I live right across the street from this property you're talking about. There's been some issues that have come up on our beach that we wanted to discuss, like the North Collier Center that's right down the street from us on Vanderbilt. Is there no way that we could use them in an emergency, or is there no way that you all have any relationship with them that could be used for that? Secondly, we were also interested, because we really only feel there's a need for a ambulance during season, could we hire a private ambulance that would just be there for four months? The people on the island would hire their own ambulance, and it would have, somebody would allow them to park it in their driveway, or find a place for it to be parked. Those are issues that we don't really know, have not been addressed, and we'd like to know whether or not that's something that's even feasible.
Just to, just to clear up one item on that, the same COPCN that the fire department's trying to get would have, a private ambulance company would have to go through the same process. And if they're giving us the problems they're giving, I can't imagine what they would give a private. But that, that's under State Statute and local statute. You have to have a certificate, and that would not be even an option that could, would be viable for that reason.
Okay. The other thing I was going to mention to you all, then, I'd like for you to keep fighting for that, for those certificate needs, and we'll help you.
And we are.
As Ms. Konczukowski said, we would definitely...
We would appreciate that support.
...help any way we can. The last thing I'd like to say is that Dawn got up and spoke about the illegal, you know, illegal use of that land for these people, and most of the people understand that Dawn does her homework, finds out what's going on, and when she presents something, it's 99.9% accurate. I know the meeting we were here before, Mr. Gilkey got up and spoke, and he said, "Here's my plan. You can tell me yes, you can tell me no, or you can tell me hell no. And I can tell you by looking around this room, I can tell you what the answer is."
So we've noticed that. Well, Greg Peterson.
Well, that's, sir. I am new to the area. I have two properties. One is almost across the street of Hickory Boulevard from that location. And one is down the street, well, six times down on the base of it. I have to just say I'm against the location, obviously. I'm even more against the opening of public beach access. I mean, I recently, I'm still remodeling this house, and I'm cringing when I hear "public beach" when I bought there and did this because it was so private.
Understood.
Flip side, I also look at my wife, my wife says, "I remind myself that I am getting older too, and I do need your services, my wood and something." So I do want you to get a place. I just don't want to be processed.
Point taken. Thank you. I'm not sure I can read the, John R.O.
D.H.
Oh, that's easy. Roth. Okay. Now that you say that, makes sense.
Did you hear my wife? She said she knew when you could read who it was.
And this will be followed by the last speaker, Bob Hewitt.
I don't want to beat the so-called dead horse all the way around to the ground, but lots of things have been covered. By the way, Charlene and I live on McLaughlin Boulevard. But I have a question. This agreement, has it already been signed, the agreement between you and RYD?
Has not.
Was it written by an attorney?
I can't answer that. I don't know the answer to that.
That was just presented to me by Mr. Gilkey.
That was a proposal.
Because I, I'm not an attorney. I was a businessman, and I had lots, too many attorneys I was known for, but...
Well, we like you already.
Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District will publicly support RYD's application to obtain the approvals and permits necessary to develop the planned development, which includes the station site. I believe they're asking you all to break the law.
Yeah, we discussed that clause in detail, so fear not.
I don't think you guys should break the law. I think you've done a fantastic job. That was a wonderful presentation, by the way. Really well thought out, well done. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Roth.
Bob Hewitt.
Hi, I'm Bob Hewitt, and I live on Hickory Boulevard. And I wonder if anybody's taken into consideration the safety hazards with the additional parking spots that people are going to be crossing that Hickory Boulevard. We just came here from Hickory Boulevard, and the traffic is very, very dense. I think it took us from McLaughlin Boulevard till we got to Benita Beach almost 20 minutes. We were late for the meeting. But I mean, you've got kids that are going to be coming out of that parking lot, running across the street, and I think that there's a huge safety concern there. And I think that that should definitely be taken under consideration. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have. Is there anybody else that got overlooked? Okay?
I'm sorry, Larry, he took my spot, which is fine. I'm very shell that everybody's been there somewhere. I agree with everything that everybody's been saying so far. There's just a couple of issues. I appreciate the last speaker coming up and talking about item number six. That's big. Hey, chief, I want to mention to you, in discussions I've heard about, you both maybe being put in the estuary for fire rescue and the idle time and all that's required. I've also heard that the boat captain will have his authority to put those rules and laws aside for the sake of emergency. Mother Ron asked his, as his cease fit. I'm an airline captain. My friends are boat captains. I've got another captain here in the paint. I also have emergency authority. That emergency authority is not for normal use. That emergency authority is for the exception. My airplane's on five. There is something that I've critical, that if I don't address that as emergency authority, a greater hazard will occur. I don't think that a normal nun in our rescue boats, up to a seaplane or whatever, would consider that an emergency authority. I don't know what we have, what do the train, our boat captains, to violate, disregard the rules of the road, the navigational rules for going through the estuary at high speed for the sake of exercising his emergency authority. That's really what I take. The other side is, in a general term, what everybody's been talking about is the environmental impact of this project. Thirdly, last line, there is a tactical way to locate a fire station, work tactically, orient it to surface the island, and put it in the middle of the island, and cover those for the water tower. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I saw another hand come up in the back of the room. That's it? All right? That concludes the public input?
Go on over here, sir.
Yes, sir?
I don't live on McLaughlin Boulevard. I live at the very north end of Hickory. And I'm the president of a 40-unit condominium, and we would highly recommend that you move your station closer to us.
Do we know it? Now, we'll have some, any commissioners' comments?
I have a motion. May I present it?
Absolutely.
I wish to make a motion to reject the acceptance of the McLaughlin property from Mr. Gilkey or any other party.
Yep. I'll second that motion.
I will second the motion.
Did you second? Please, we have a motion on the floor. Please hold the applause to the end. Who seconded?
I said second, but I don't know if I heard you.
Who, you said?
I seconded, but I don't know when you, if you said it, Pat, also. I don't know. I didn't hear you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, let's do a roll call.
Aye.
Commissioner Casilla, Commissioner Forbes, Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner McCord.
Aye.
Commissioner Lowhands, an aye.
Not now for coming. This man has adjourned.